The Tuesday, July 16th, 2019, meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Just a brief announcement about open podium. An invitation to our residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Before each council meeting, typically, our council meetings are held the first and third Tuesday of each month. The open podium times are from 6:30 to 6:55 in this council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at (952) 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter, so we can be better prepared for your topic. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. We often have the pleasure of having presentations, especially from many of our elected officials that represent us at other levels of government. We're really excited tonight to have County Commissioner Debbie Gotal give a presentation. As many of you know, Eden Prairie encompasses districts, pieces of districts five and six within Hennepin County. Five is everything south of, I believe, Highway five, somewhere around in there. So about two-thirds of Eden Prairie is represented by this commissioner that's come in before, so we're really pleased to have you here tonight. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come and talk to you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members and city manager staff. It's really great to see you again. I don't get down here often enough to talk to you. I'm always available, though. If you want to want me to come join you for any reason, to help you out, I'm happy to come down here and drive your way, see this beautiful city that you have. I also wanted to talk to you about some of the highlights that have been going on, because I have to tell you, as a county commissioner, I ran to make sure that cities were getting what they needed and that the grants and the types of dollars that were available to counties were coming to the cities that I represent. So the highlights are the Good Stewart Grant, which improves water quality in your community. Last January, Fairway Woods condominiums received $24,750 for runoff erosion control in your community. This project will divert the roof water from the condominium building into four rock swales and will fill, and it'll flow into two rain gardens. So it'll beautify the area as well. So I think this is great. The Tree Canopy Grants is something new, and they are so popular that we put more money in them and we will keep them. So this is no longer going to be a one-time deal. So be looking for that. It'll come in your email to your city staff. So especially when the heavy damage of our trees are being sustained by the Emerald Ash mower, we're all working with that. It's important to keep on top of this. I'm happy to be able, that we awarded $30,500 to the city of Eden Prairie for that. One of the grants that I think is so highly sought after, but sometimes we actually leave dollars on the table, that's why I'm here, are the youth sports grants. So I was glad that Hennepin County awarded $57,750 to the city of Eden Prairie to replace an existing community center picnic shelter in Starling Lake Park. That's where you hold a lot of your beautiful, what, summer festivals and music and everything like that. It's absolutely lovely, so this is, I'm grateful we were able to do this. So those are some of the things that we do. We also have environmental grants and many others. What I want to tell you is that, so that we can watch the grants for you, we put together a spreadsheet that I believe has been emailed to you, and if you don't have it, let me know. I'll make sure the staff get it to you. And it has all the grants on there. So when you're looking and buy what they're for, like cleanup grants, recycling grants, community development grants, energy grants, we have a lot of different grants. And I want to make sure that when you're into a project, that we look at all the grants and we get ahead of it so that we can apply those dollars. I know from my past being in a city, that it really matters that you piece together all these pieces of dollars to make a project go. And $50,000 here and $100,000 here can make up our breakup project. So. The other thing is road projects. We do a lot of road projects here, right? This time of year. So Flying Cloud Drive reconstruction. We've already heard a lot of comments about that from some of your constituents here already. Hennepin County, in coordination with MinDOT, Carver County, and the cities of Eden Prairie, Chanhassen are reconstructing Flying Cloud Drive between Highway 101 and Charleston Road. Improving the driving surfaces, safety's a real big issue. We will be able to put the road above the 100-year flood plain as our home, too, so because of the flooding events. It'll have a multi-use trail along the north side of the road, so it'll fill the gap of a trail and a network from Shakopee to Eden Prairie. So the completion is the fall of this year, so I'm really excited about that. But with that, I also want to talk to you that, you know, city staff have approached me specifically along some of these road projects. We have cost participation policies, and what we have found through a lot of conversations is that sometimes they're not understood well. There are dollars that we get that we, from Hennepin County, that come down here that could only be very specifically spent, and you want to spend it on this, and we say no, and it's not because we don't want you to, it's because we can't, because some of them come from federal sources, some come from state, some come from Met Council. But I think we could be a lot more clear about that. And so I want to tell you that that cost participation policy is totally rewritten, and we are now going through it, and we will have copies out to you. We want your comments. We want to make this clear. We want to make this transparent, and we want you to feel like you're getting your fair share, okay? Because we know that that can feel really awkward when you don't understand, and you find out after the fact that you've got to cough up a considerable amount of dollars that you didn't think you were going to. So we are working on that. Heard you loud and clear. Southwest Light Rail. The construction has begun for Southwest Light Rail, and the project's on track to finish in 2023, so we're really excited about this. The county is particularly excited about the station in Eden Prairie and the potential to connect people with opportunities for housing and jobs and creation, you know, recreation for the city, but just what it enhances on the economic development side for you folks. So it'll offer bus, you already offer bus, but it'll offer the light rail connections to the stations, and then we'll have adjoining bus rides before that. You know, and it'll propagate future development, which it already has, well before the station is even here. We're seeing developers, I'm sure you're getting contacted for this, so that's a great thing. And most of all, the one we hear the most about, the Eden Prairie Library. Boy, they hate it when we close a library. Staff are anticipating a move in later September, but there's a good chance it could be sooner, okay? There's a lot of families in the neighborhood who are excited about this library, the increased patron space, more hands-on learning, the designing and collaborative spaces and quiet study spaces, the electrical updates that are much needed in a parking lot that works a lot better, be a lot more flexible layout. So it's just really important that we do this, and I've been taking sneak peeks of these libraries and putting them on Facebook, so I did Oxborrow already, because that opens on Saturday. I'll do that with Eden Prairie, too, and I can't tell you how many hits we're getting. And there's so many unique and wonderful things that some of the architects are doing in these libraries to make them so much more fun, so much more enjoyable, and just engaging. So I'm excited to see what happens here, and I haven't got the lowdown on that, but one of the committee assignments I have, I'm libraries. I'm libraries and I'm budget this year. So those are two big ones that I have. So I also want to tell you what I have for handouts. I brought some stuff. I understand that you guys are really taking on housing. Thank you for doing that. That's a really big and heavy lift, and I appreciate that. And so I have this wonderful handout for housing about what Hennepin County does. And so what I need you to do when you're ready is, when your committee's ready, I will bring staff down here, and we will give you a primer on all what we do from the county, so we can figure out how you can dovetail into our programming. So I'd love to do that for you. But I think a startling number is that the county annually spends $134 million annually on housing and housing services, and we are not even cracking this cookie. So we have a whole bunch of these handouts for you, and we'll pass them out, and we have extras, too, so you can pass along to staff. One of the things I'm very proud of is your District Five handout that talks about all the grants and things that you have received, talks about the programming, talks about the dollars and the budget, but one of the more important things that I thought is this little insert I put in here, because what I'm so proud of the District Five is the record turnout of voters that I put in here. This is something you can hand out to constituents as well. If you want more of them, I got boxes, okay? These are for you. I take them to farmer's markets and everywhere I go, to senior coffees and everywhere. So. Happy to do that. If everybody wants to talk budget, and I, nobody does, nobody ever comes to the budget meetings, but I, budget is my year to do this, so I'm excited about it. This is our budget booklet, and it's just a little one, so everybody can go look at their budgets and see this. This is a little, so I brought that. And the thing that's the most popular, the new bike map, okay? So the bike map. And this is the 2018, there will be a 2019 that comes out next year, right? We're a year behind on those. So this is something that everybody wants. So we have some of those. If you want stacks of those, let us know for any of your events or anything like this, my staff will bring them down to you. We'd be happy to do that. But I'm also pleased, because I brought a special guest with me, I'm pleased to introduce Hennepin County Sheriff David, Dave Hutchinson, he goes by Hutch. He's been an excellent partner at the county board. I can't tell you how much I appreciate him on the opioid crisis, on addressing mental illness in our community and in our jail system. So I'd like to welcome him to the podium to speak quickly.
Thank you, Sheriff Hutchinson. Thanks for being here.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for having me. Thank you, Commissioner. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank Mayor and the council members and the rest of city staff. Thank you for the invite. Second, I would like to thank our wonderful partner, Chief Greg Weber, for his years of service for the city and to the county. As a sheriff, when I work with chiefs like him, it makes my job easier, because, you know, there's some chiefs who are easy to get along with. He's one of the best ones, and obviously, he runs a great department here, as you guys and gals know that. Of course, my name's Dave Hutchinson. Fairly new to this office, took office in January. It was on the news a little bit, if you didn't see. And I was told here that I have like an hour to talk. Is that correct?
Yep, minus 56 minutes.
Oh, good. All right. Well, I like it. Short, sweet. I just want to talk about my staff. My staff is new. Chief Deputy, who is right under the sheriff, she manages the day-to-day operations. She's been there 20 years. She's unbelievable with the budget and other stuff, and lucky to have her. Major Bob Stoffey is in charge of enforcement services. For us, that's the SWAT team, it's the patrol, courts, jails, all that stuff. Major Pat King is in charge of investigations. Major Jeff Storms is an Eden Prairie resident, is in charge of admin and personnel. And then we have a new gal coming. Her name is Dewanawett. She's coming from Dakota County. She's going to take over some of the court and jail duties, because we're actually down one major. And obviously, we're the largest jail, largest courts. I mean, if you haven't been to that county courthouse and seen the madness in there, you would really appreciate it. The men and women who police that are probably the top in the nation, in my opinion. The goals of the new administration, obviously, you want well-trained officers and deputies. We're working with chiefs like Chief Weber and kind of doing pilot programs of mental health and how we're going to catch up on things like that. I think we're doing a good job already, six, seven months into it. Accountability, diverse hiring, our diversity's gone up, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's gone up just since January, it's gone up several percentage points, so we're proud of that. Community involvement, we have a lot of tours of the jail, tours of City Hall, tours of our many facilities. You know, people forget how large Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is. It's, you know, the biggest, most populated in the state. 1.3 million residents we serve, 556 square miles, 104 named lakes, three rivers, 280 miles of lakes and waterways, 45 cities. We have 36 local police departments, which is, you know, again, I talk about that, that's a lot of police chiefs to manage, and people, again, I'm not trying to get on his good side, but Jeff, excuse me, Greg, is one of the best, and he didn't pay me to say any of this, I promise. There's the eight lines of businesses. We have jail, court, patrol, warrant, civil investigations, and we have the largest dispatch center in the state, which you are not a part of, but we have crime lab, task force, and then we're going to be starting two more, kind of armed to this, is we're going to have a strictly intel unit, which is the way policing's going, where we're going to separate investigations to intel, so it's kind of smarter, more future policing of getting facts and all the evidence lined up before we go out there. It's safer for the officers, safer for the residents. And we're starting a new community outreach team, which is going to be strictly to get out there with our community engagement team. We have a large community engagement team consisting of people from all over the world who now live in Hennepin County. You know, I got this whole list of stuff that this guy behind us put together, but it's way too much to read, so I think it's, we'll just go on a few short ones. I think the most important thing for Eden Prairie is, you know, we're assisting agency for, your police department can handle their own business, but we'll come in for crime lab, we'll come in for other stuff if we need, we have a task force called the Violent Offender Task Force. We go over the whole county and outside the county sometimes, going after the real bad of the bad. They have called us for that. Our CC unit, which is, you know, again, when I talk about the future of policing, is the criminal intelligence kind of law enforcement, where we have data collection, you know, by the time we make a solid arrest, we have facts and documents, and when it goes to people like the city attorney and the county attorney, it's pretty easy for them to deal with. And I think the chief can contest that, is Hennepin County Sheriff's Office runs some of the best assisting, you know, figures in the county. And I think we'd be upset to not mention the Southwest Hennepin Drug Task Force. Eden Prairie and the chief are the leaders in that, but we kind of take a backseat to that, but they do a ton of things. I have, again, 15 different, busy writing today, a bunch of things. So one of these is Eden Prairie had suspicious activity call. A homeowner called. The Southwest Drug Task Force did a warrant on it, found a felon holding marijuana, a stolen handgun, and body armor. I mean, this is, you know, Eden Prairie doesn't have a ton of this, but it does happen in our, and with Eden Prairie's help and our help, we do a lot of good work. As you can see, we're not going to read all these, but there's pages after pages of how we're doing it. So if you guys know anybody that is looking for a job for intergum relations, I might need a new guy, so, just kidding. But thank you for having me here. I'm excited. You liked that one. I'm excited to be here. Hennepin County Sheriff's Office is going to be the best partner we can be. I know the old administration was a good partner, but we're going to do a better job and give 100% support, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Sheriff Hutchinson. Thanks for coming.
Thanks. I still here. Thank you again for having us.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Lothammer, I didn't see your hand moving quickly under the sports grants, money left on the table comment. I was, I hope you've got that down. I'm assuming we're applying for every sports grant possible.
Yeah, yeah. And in fact, we also received recently money for the three playgrounds that are going in, too.
Nice.
So we, when possible, hope to be in line for those.
You're very, I'm teasing you, you know that. You're very good at going out and getting every grant possible. It's just when higher-level government people say, "There's money out here left on the table," we all perk up, so. Thank you, both of you, for coming in today. Really appreciate that. So we have a donation. Mr. Getchell, do you want to comment on that?
I will turn it over to Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, council members, we had an offer from Doug Schmidt, a longtime resident, who had historical farming equipment that he wanted to donate to the city, and the equipment actually belonged to his grandfather, who many people knew as Uncle Joe. The more people we talk to, it seems, the more people do remember and maybe have even interacted with Uncle Joe a long time ago. So when we have this type of equipment being offered, we do run it by the Historic Preservation Commission to get their opinion on the acceptability of it and the cultural appropriateness of it, and they did agree. There were a couple pieces that they did not suggest us taking, but you'll see in your packet, there's photos of several of the pieces of equipment that we are going to be taking. We'll be displaying them at historical sites, and we appreciate the offer, and we have a motion then to accept the equipment.
Great. Any questions, council? Otherwise, motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of historical farm equipment from Doug Schmidt.
Second.
Any other further conversation, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next donation, Mr. Getchell.
Again.
Mr. Lothammer.
Your Honor, council members, I know I say this with many of these contributions, that without them, we wouldn't be able to have the types of events or the quality of events that we do, and this one in particular really does help us, not just from the financial standpoint, but these are a lot of businesses that really care about the event in the community, and their partnership is very much appreciated. And I could probably just play the tape from years after year after year, and it might be almost identical. These are, these are companies that have, on a year-in, year-out basis, continued to step up and contribute to this. So this $3,400 total, it's towards our hometown celebration, the 3rd and 4th of July. $1,000 from JA Price Agency, $1,000 from OSR Physical Therapy, $500 from Southwest Metro Pickleball Club, $400 from Brookdale Senior Living, $200 from Wall Trends, $200 from Kowalski's Market, $100 from Elam Shores, and also $200 from Lions Tap that we had previously recognized but are including it tonight.
Great. I'm assuming there's no questions about that? Is there a motion?
I'd like, oh, I'd like to thank all these businesses a great deal for the help with that, and move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $3,400 from various donors to go towards the July 3rd and 4th hometown celebration.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'm assuming, should we just skip you, Mr. Getchell, and go right to Mr. Lothammer?
Yes.
Mr. Lothammer.
Absolutely. Thank you. We are looking at, specific to movies in the parks, $500 donation from Dreamworks, and we've got a few of those coming up at Starling Lake Park, and so that helps pay for some of the rights that we need to obtain to show those movies, so we thank Dreamworks for that contribution.
Nice. Motion.
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $500 from Dreamworks to go towards the movies in the park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of the agenda and other items is, we can either make the motion and, well, it's probably best to add now. Anybody have any additional agenda items? Mr. Getchell.
Mayor, do. We have an extra consent item. We're very pleased to announce that we were able to get the Castle Ridge Development second reading on the consent agenda. We didn't think that would make it this meeting, but we are able to make it. It's on Goldenrod, it's on the consent agenda, the last item. So that's being added tonight from since when the packet went out on Friday.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I have a small item to add under the city attorney's report.
Okay. And then I have two items under council member reports. Anybody else? With all of those additions, is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda with additions.
With additions, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Anyone have any items to question or lines to question within either of the minutes? Either the workshop or the council meeting? If not, is there a motion to approve them both?
I move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, June 18th, 2019. City council meeting held Tuesday, June 18th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Assuming no items to question, since you did not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on with the consent calendar, are there any items that you wish to pull for additional consideration? Yes, Mr., our council member Freiber.
I'd like, let's see, letter F and letter I. What I'm looking for, I just like a clarification.
Okay. Any specific or just?
Just a word as far as rejected bids, just so I get a clarification of what we're consenting on.
Mr. Ellis.
Mayor Kay, city council members, we opened two bids here between the last city council meeting, and what we're finding and hearing from other cities, we kind of suspected this, the labor market in the construction field is so tight right now, probably largely due to the Southwest LRT project being so large, that bids that are coming in right now are coming in extremely high. I think one bid was 67% over the engineer's estimate, and the other one was 25%. So we're hoping that we can rebid these later in the year, when a lot of the work has been done this year, and contractors are perhaps sharpening their pencils, trying to line up work for next year. So unfortunately, we'll delay those projects, but we're hoping that we can rebid them and get more favorable pricing over the winter.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Should we talk about the Goldenrod, the addition of the Castle Ridge redevelopment? Do you want to ask about that? I mean, it's good, I'm glad that we have it on here. Do you want, any comments that you want to, want to make about getting it on?
Well, you know, I think it's a matter of timing. The development agreement was approved, and everything that was a condition or a discussion at the first reading that was approved by the city council is part of the development agreement, but the city attorney prepared the development agreement, so he could, you know, add any commentary.
Mr. Getchell summarizes it very accurately. It reflects what the council approved in the first reading. We were just working through the details of the language with the developer and told them beginning of the week, last, at the end of last week, that we needed to have something signed into us before this meeting so that we could keep them on the agenda, and we were able to accomplish that with good cooperation with the developer and the developer's attorney.
Good. Fantastic news. Thank you.
It's a good question. Thanks. Are there any other items to question, or are we ready to vote? All right. So we actually need the motion.
I move approval of item A to P on the consent calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving right along, we have our first public hearing, Sheldon Place. Mr. Getchell.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and council. We have a proposal for housing development, you know, actually in the area here in Eden Prairie Road, where we have quite a bit of housing approved lately near Highway 212 and Eden Prairie Road. The proposal here is to build 10 townhome units at 7960 Eden Prairie Road. This is a one-acre property on the west side of Eden Prairie Road, about a half-mile south of Highway 5, as I mentioned. This site is known as the former Gunner Electric Site. So currently, there's an office building, a shop building, and several sheds on the property, if you've driven by. The applicant is proposing two, three-unit buildings at the north and south end of the property, and two, two-unit buildings along the west side. Access to the site will remain in its current location from Glory Lane. The buildings, the townhomes, are proposed at two and a half stories each, about 3,400 square feet, with a two-car garage and two covered parking stalls for guests in front of the garage. The units are, consist of a lower level, main level, living space, and an upper level. So I do know that the applicant is here to provide a presentation on the proposal. You would have a public hearing for a first reading of the PUD approval and the waivers and the preliminary plat this evening, and staff and the developer can answer any questions you may have during, before, and after the public hearing.
Great. Proponent?
Tim Brown, 8147 Savannah Valley Way in Victoria. I am the vice president of ShaveCo Development, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide this presentation to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and city staff. I'll just go through this briefly, and I'll stand for any questions that you may have as part of this presentation. So the Sheldon Place project is a 10-unit townhome community located on Eden Prairie Road, right in between Highway 5 Road, right in between Highway 5 and 212. The site is about one acre in total property. It's a challenging site just from a size and dimension standpoint. It's 330 feet wide and 130 feet deep. Current zoning is rural. The current use, as was stated, was the Gunner Electric Site, a couple of older buildings that are located right up against Eden Prairie Road, some storage buildings, some shed. It also has a septic system, as well as wells on the property. The property is guided right now into 2030 plan for medium density housing, and our proposal is to come forward with a plan to, it's really an infill development plan. Part of our infill development goals include mitigating the current non-conforming conditions of the property, which we talked about, mitigate some of the historical uses of the property along Eden Prairie Road, actually in the right-of-way this property was formally used as a filling station. And through some of our investigations, we found some items that will need some further evaluation once we start the demolition process. So all of that will get cleaned up as part of our planned development. Of course, we'll be bringing in new buildings, as well as additional landscaping and screening along Eden Prairie Road for the site. Given the size of the site and the constraints, we utilize some creative engineering and planning components with regard to buildings and setbacks, and really to create an urban housing feel in this location, given its walkability to a lot of different retail and park areas was part of our goal. The next slide here just depicts what the units will look like from the front, rear, and side elevations. You know, our buyer demographic here is the empty nester group, as well as some young professional opportunity. And we're utilizing the main floor living component with the master bedroom, as well as all the main living space on the main floor, that can be accessed via a residential elevator from the lower level. So with an option to add that in, that provides the ability to have an easy up and down access for those buyers. From a material standpoint, the front elevation will be a James Hardy or LP siding product, and the sides and rear are planned to be maintenance-free vinyl siding. This will be an HOA-maintained community for all of the residents there, which will include all the landscaping and all of the snow removal, as well as the exterior maintenance of the overall site. The property itself is situated to have two parking stalls that are part of the underground garage, if you will, and then the main floor is actually built over the top of a covered parking area, which will provide two additional stalls on the individual lot for that unit. As we indicated before, there's going to be 10 total units. Two buildings will be a triplex, and two buildings will be a twin. The key components from a development and engineering standpoint, the slide before you shows the actual layout of the overall site, how the parking works, and how the drive lanes work within the overall community itself. There is an underground stormwater infiltration system that will manage all the stormwater onsite, given the site constraints, and that's located on the eastern part of the property up against Eden Prairie Road. Part of it is located to the north of the entry point, and part of it is located just to the south of the entry point. Some of the things we're working on with regard to setback components is that we're proposing a 20-foot setback for the building off of the property line for the north building and the south building going into their side elevations. For reference, from the back of the curb to the building is about 36 feet in overall setback from the street component. The stormwater system, since it'll be located on a lot that'll be owned by the HOA, it'll be owned by the HOA, and there'll be a management company that is installed and in place to manage the system in accordance with the watershed and the city via a separate declaration that'll be part of the property. Some of the sustainable considerations that we're looking at, all of the units that we'll be building will be, I can go back here, one slide here, sorry. Sustainable considerations that we're looking at, the Minnesota Green Pass standards, all of the units will be built to those standards, of course, high efficiency HVAC systems, low flush plumbing as part of this. We're going to pre-wire all of the units so that they will be suitable to install an electric charging station in the garage, should someone option to do that. We're also going to be installing a separate electric car charger station in the guest parking area that will be available for the resident's guests, should they need that. We'll be utilizing a demolition company, as well as the refuse company, that has committed to recycle over 70% of the refuse that is created onsite, both from the development component, as well as from the vertical building component as well. And of course, we have the connectivity from the site onto the trail system on Eden Prairie Road, which will access the north retail, as well as to the south regional trail system. The, finally, the PUD request and, you know, the beneficial outcomes that we're talking about is, you know, to rezone from the rural zoning to an RM 6.5, which is consistent with the 2030 plan. Of course, we're asking for some setbacks with regard to, you know, the front yard setbacks, as well as some other items, including the density components, and we're looking from that, from a beneficial standpoint, that we're coming in to remove this non-conforming scenario, removing the septic system and the wells, and enhancing the landscaping of the area on this lot, and really to create a new housing opportunity and product within the area. And I'm happy to stand here and answer any questions that you may have on the project.
Council. Council questions? Council member Ryan.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for your presentation, and looking at your package, I'm really glad to see sustainability aspect that you included in this package. It's the first time, I think, I've seen last seven or eight months that enabling LED lighting, charging stations, it's really admirable, and congratulations on that. A couple of questions. We got to trees. You haven't mentioned anything, is there large trees in that area, in that compound? And what is the?
There are a number of large trees that are within the overall site area. There's one heritage tree that's going to be removed on the site, that's located right in the foundation of our north building. If you look at the landscape plan, that might be part of your packet, I don't know if it is or not, I assume it is. In the, the overall constraints that we have on the site are that we can't plant any trees within drainage and utility easements. And because we have infrastructure, both water and sewer coming in from the northwest corner and the southwest corner, and then the drive lanes where all of it's going, there are certain areas that we just can't plant trees. So we tried to maximize our tree planting areas for a replanting plan within the areas that we possibly could. And part of the other restriction that we have is that we can't plant trees over the top of the stormwater system, so we utilize a lot of shrubbery and plantings in those areas.
Have you received any feedback from neighboring residents related to this development?
We had a neighborhood meeting a while back, and we had, I think, six or eight different parties that came to that meeting, and most of the feedback was, was very positive. The only negative component or question that we had was, well, how tall are these buildings going to be? And really was a matter of looking at, our site, from a grading standpoint, is going to be dropped slightly in the middle, but we're still going to be two and a half stories tall, so we'll be either at or slightly above our western and north and southwestern neighbors.
Last question. Is there any traffic impact on the Eden Prairie Road by having this development?
So we had a traffic memo prepared, and what they indicated, what, there was no, there was no substantial impact within the overall aspect onto Eden Prairie Road. It was such that, it was so low that it had no material impact at all.
Thank you.
Council member Freiber.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I appreciate this presentation. I got to tell you, as I'm looking at this, I'm quite familiar with the property. It's a rather impressive proposal. It has a lot of amenities I don't think we've seen, and will fit some needs that we're looking for out here. One question I have, and I'm not, it's just one of concern, it's one of setback. Now, we're looking, I'm looking east onto Eden Prairie Road right now, and I'm looking at a 36-foot setback from the curb, and I'm looking at two and a half stories. What I'm concerned about is just one, if you look at the project that's just south of that, on the other side of 212, just going straight down Eden Prairie Road, there's, to me, some of those setbacks look awful tight to that road. And what I'd be concerned with would be duplicating that problem. It's nothing to do with the project. I mean, the project, I'm going to tell you flat out, is very impressive, and I know you do have limitations. I mean, you're only dealing with 130 feet by a 300-foot lot, so there is challenges. But it's just something I want to open discussion on, that it's a concern I have, as I'm just looking at that. Because I think that that other project could have been done a little better on the setbacks, and one of duplication of that, that's what I'm talking about. But, nice presentation.
So just to be clear, you're worried about the precedent going forward of having that close to a four-lane road, or what's your?
Statics. The appearance of it. It's two and a half stories that close to the road, as far as what the appearance would be from the road itself.
How close is the current building? Let's see, the current building, that current?
It's got to be, it's a heck of a lot closer.
I was going to say is closer, I think.
Eight feet off or something.
Yeah. So if you look at the garage and you look at the house number 7960, that is pretty darn close.
It's probably about 12 feet off the back of curb right now.
Yeah.
The existing building.
And so you're talking, what, 20 feet?
Well, we'll be tripling from back of curb from that distance. So yeah, 20 feet from the property line, but 36 from the back of the curb itself.
Right. So to me, it's going to be an improvement, but obviously, you're raising the height, which is, which is change, but in terms of the setback itself, you're actually moving the buildings back further.
We'll be dropping a portion of the site, just from a grading perspective, but the buildings will go vertical from there, and we understand that concern and have that same concern as to, well, how is this going to feel when you come up to it and come into it? And part of that was mitigated by the landscape screening that we have directly in front of those two units that are facing the, or the side elevations fronting the street. On the south component, we currently have three conifer trees that are there, that are sizable and will remain, and then we're planting around those, and then adding additional ones that will buffer the, or screen the north building. So, you know, from our perspective, who we're selling to, they don't want to be right on Eden Prairie Road either, and in trying to mitigate that impact, both from a visual barrier and a sound barrier with the trees, that will be there not only in the summertime, but also have, you know, green and color and fullness throughout the wintertime was, you know, a major component of what our landscape, our landscape skate plan shows.
I just had two brief questions too. So do you have any, oh, you also?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry. Why don't you go first, since you had punched your button?
Okay. I do like your landscaping. I think you've put in some thought into that, which does help the fact that it, you know, some developments are going to be a little further, but there's only so much to this site. Also, your willingness to do all the cleanup on the site, that really does need to be done. Have you considered solar on the roofs of any, or will that be allowed or compatible?
I thought about that as part of the overall sustainability. I think the challenge that we have within an HOA-maintained community and a kind of a, there isn't a defined line within the roof structure that, you know, how do we manage that as an overall standpoint within the community? Some people might want it, some people might not, and how does that all work? So, you know, we opted not to include it as part of this proposal.
Okay.
But it was, it was thought about.
I have to commend you on the fact that you've got elevators in this, which means these properties can be useful for multi-generations. If, you know, a middle-aged couple moves in and they need to have their parents come, but they can't do stairs, it allows it, it allows people to buy it, you know, maybe when they're ready to move out of their other house, but they can probably stay there forever because of it. The one question I have is if, do you automatically put these in all buildings, or it says option, what happens if the person buying that unit doesn't want it? Do you keep the structure so it can be put in later?
Yes. So if you choose to put the elevator in up front, it goes in. If you don't, what is done is it's framed around and it just becomes a closet. But from a structure standpoint, from an electrical standpoint, and a mechanical standpoint, the area that will be, or could be installed as an elevator can go in at any point in time after the unit is actually built.
Yeah. That's really good, because there's a lot of people who end up with, one of the two people, all of a sudden, have a heart attack and they can't do stairs anymore. And all of a sudden, with that, they have to move, or someone has a child that has some special needs, or whatever happens, the ability to have this, I think, allows people to move in here and plan to stay as long as they like, and have whatever relatives need care, because there's a wonderful thing on the upper level for a bedroom and family room there, that would be perfect for a family member that needs to come and live with someone. So I think it's extremely creative. It's one of the nicest three-story townhome, you know, looks that I've seen. I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Just a couple of questions, real fast. Any concerns about the buried gas tank issue?
Well, there isn't any more gas tanks in the property at all. So that was removed a long time ago when Eden Prairie Road was expanded.
Great.
What we discovered when we did the evaluation of the buildings themselves is that both of the structures out there have a, an old auto repair pit, and they were probably four feet wide by 10 feet long. And so when we discovered those, we said, let's take a closer look at what they are and what's in them. So we had both of them drilled in two different areas to figure out, was there any residual contamination? And there was a very low level of diesel range organics that were picked up, but they were all below what the MPCA requires as part of the registration program. So when, what we've committed to, and what we're going to be doing, is during the demolition process, when we take the buildings down, we will have our environmental consultant onsite to excavate out those areas, and they'll do onsite testing to figure out, you know, is there any identification issue there? If there is, we'll stop, we'll figure out what we need to do, how deep we need to go, and whether or not we need to transport that material offsite and dispose of it appropriately.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for that. And then, I was out there just this afternoon before the meeting, and the one neighborhood on the south side has a white vinyl fence that runs, you know, the entire south side and then up the west side halfway, right? And then a wooden fence starts, I don't know if that's on, I think, this property. So what are your plans in terms of that white vinyl fence, in terms of continuity? Is there any thought of just, you know, running with that and keeping it going around the whole?
Yeah. So the wood fence that's kind of partially on the property is on, it's partially on this property, it's partially on the HOA property. The white vinyl fence is all on the HOA property. So what we're planning on doing, of course, is removing the wood fence component and really, you know, landscaping around our perimeter site to help with that aspect. But we don't plan to do anything additional to
Okay.
the vinyl fence product.
Okay. Is that it for now? We can have a public hearing? Is that fine? If we, and we can always call Mr. Brown back up, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this project? Council?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution for planned unit development, concept review on 1.01 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 1.01 acres, and a zoning district change from rural to RM 6.5 on 1.01 acres, and adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of one lot into 11 lots on 1.01 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Is there a second? Great. Council, additional comments, questions, or are you ready to vote? All right. All those in favor of this project, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome. Congratulations.
Yeah, welcome. Looks like a great project. We're excited to see it.
Thank you.
All right. We have a kind of a perfunctory housekeeping item, vacation. Mr. Mr. Gettle.
Oh, we do, Mayor. Wouldn't be a council meeting without vacating a drainage and utility easement. I think this is like five for five.
They're pretty exciting.
Right.
They are important. We're not downplaying that, but...
I'm looking forward to the Sheldon Place vacation of drainage and utility easements. That'll come in like three months.
Okay.
But this one, this one, Mayor and council members, is related to the C.H. Robinson project that you approved previously. And as has been the case with all of these, the property owners have requested a vacation of, of the easements. And if there are new easements needed, that will be a part of the final plat. Actually, there is one update to this one. I believe it is the phone company has raised an objection, and the approval of this is predicated on that objection being dealt with and taken care of.
Great. Any questions before we open it up to a public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to discuss with the council, or give us input on this vacation project? Okay, counsel?
I move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating drainage and utility easement.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Payment of claims, is there a motion? And then I'll ask you if there's any items to question. Motion?
Move, move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
It's your second?
Second.
Anyone have any items that they wish to have clarity on or question? All right. It is a roll call.
Councilmember Aho.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg.
Aye.
Councilmember Noraham.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Mayor Case.
Aye.
All right. I believe we are down to reports of council members, and I think I was the only one that had a couple items. I just have two. Quickly, the first is just a comment on the Fourth of July. Just incredibly positive feelings about, I know PG and I were there for most of the day, Councilmember Freiberg was there for parts of it as well. I was also there on the third. I just want to do a big thank you call-out to Lori Brinks, Brinks, with an S?
No S.
No S. I knew that. Just testing you. You were good. You passed.
Yep.
And staff, our police and our fire, our volunteers, the Lions, the pickleball, Southwest Metro Club, other nonprofits, just really, truly, an amazing day. And I, I'm terrible at guessing large groups' population numbers, whatever. But, that being said, and I was talking to a few police officers, I was more aware on the Fourth toward the evening that there were more large pockets of people in all areas. I mean, usually, it's kind of down by the band stadium there, or the stage. But this was, people were everywhere. And I, you know, if we had 10,000 to 12,000 in the past, I just kind of believe we had 12. Have you seen estimates? I've got to believe there were 12,000 to 15,000 people there, but, a lot.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Lotthammer?
Do you want to guess?
Yeah.
You're, you're right, in that I did also hear there were more than in the past.
Okay.
And one of the things, when we talk about kind of the estimate of the population that attends, sometimes we forget about, too, if you go up and down Valley View Road, and in the adjacent neighborhoods, the amount of people that are on the roadside and in people's backyards, that...
So true, too. Absolutely. And we saw that heading home. So, just a really, I think, phenomenal day. And I did ask during the evening announcements, when most people were there, sitting in front of the stage, and I just had a show of hands, how many people did not live in Eden Prairie, and I feel like about half and about half. And I, I think it's positive incredibly for the half of people that live in Eden Prairie, that this is a, an amazing amenity for them, for us. But I think it's also really good PR, just a great thing to do, and bring in people who also spend money in our city, who go to restaurants, who buy things here. I just think it's a, very much of a positive. And we heard from comment after comment from different people that did not live in Eden Prairie, that this was the place they go every year, and this was the best around. So, with that in mind, I just have a suggestion, and I know that staff that day talked with me several, several different conversations about the concept or potential of a parade. You're laughing already, but let me continue. So, my thought was this, and PG and I were standing there around 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock. And the, the day was great, but it was slow-going, just a slow start, you know? And people start to come at 12, and one, a few more come, a few more come at 2:00. And we used to, in the past, I'd say 10, 15 years ago, have some kind of a big band, maybe a kiddie band, or something at 2:00, and something else at 4:00. So, here's my thought. Talking to different elected officials who do the parade thing, and talking to people from Edina and Chan that do the parade thing, is that if you put, position your parade in between some of the other parades, and if we had something that maybe started in the high school parking lot, and utilized the high school band, and the cheerleaders, and the Lions Club with a float and the rotary, and we just really made it a, a really great community activity, and had it end at Round Lake, at the stage, and then have some kind of a band that's there to bring children and families together, and just have a, kind of, the kickoff beginning of the day, you know, it starts at 2:00. I, I realize pickleball's going on before that, and softball and all that, or baseball, but, anyway, I just thought that would be pretty exciting, and everyone had run it by, except Rick Gettle laughs at me, but everyone else thought it was really good.
I'm laughing, I'm laughing with you.
I know you think it's a good idea.
Well, we used to have the kiddie parade, where the kids would decorate their bikes and their wagons and straws.
And we could still do pieces of that. I mean, we can pull it all together, but we've got, we've got so many different nonprofits and groups, and, and just a showcasing of our high school. We, I was just at a regional council of mayors, that the topic was to bring your school district superintendent, and we were going to talk about workforce issues. It was on Monday down in Minneapolis. And of, of the 30 or 40 cities represented there that day, I'd say we were one of two or three that had the same, 96% of our cities also are school district. That's a, that's a really great phenomenon, that I think that we need to continue to promote and celebrate, and it's just a win-win for both governmental units, but both groups that represent the people of the city. So, again, the chance to have a parade that would hi, highlight and showcase high school, the schools, the, the Chamber of Commerce, I just, I think, I've talked about this with Pat Mulqueen, and you can tell I get a little bit excited about it, but I think, I think it's, would be a really cool thing. So, I'm just throwing that out. I think that's, I mean, in terms of recommendations, I just thought it was so good. Oh, I will say one other quick thing. The idea of tying it back into our sustainable Eden Prairie, and I chatted with Bob Lanzy, no, not Bob Lan, yes, maybe, yes, who was there representing some of the food vendor piece, part of it. And it's doable to have, possibly, I believe, I want to pursue this, to have everything be organically recyclable at the Fourth of July next year. That, to have that as a mandate with vendors, and we couldn't, you know, we could the first year incentivize it, like, rather than the $500 you pay in for a permit, you pay in this year, 300, if you have all recyclable, organically recyclable plates, spoons, you know, straws, I mean, whatever it is. I, I think that, and I, I think I got a couple more people excited about that idea, too. So, we would just really push that idea, that we would be completely organically recyclable at our Fourth of July celebration, with 15,000 people out there utilizing all those products. So, those are the only two recommendations I had coming out of it. Fantastic day. Mr. Lotthammer, you and your staff, amazing, and Mr. Weber, Chief Weber, I know Chief Scott was out there. We've got, just, our staff, I think you were out there. You've been everywhere. I've seen you everywhere else, but, anyway, we have, we have phenomenal staff, just amazing staff. And by the way, I had the chance also Sunday to be, well, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to be up at the Air Expo with the Wings of the North. And I believe we had up to 40 city staff volunteering up there, including police, fire, city people that love aviation and planes. So, that was a, a great event as well. I'm just very proud of our city, very proud of our staff, and I think they're making really good impressions everywhere they go. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. My second point is more, not that that's not serious, but more sober, I suppose, sobering. But I, I, I think because of the Virginia municipal maintenance building shooting, and then I had the chance to go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors in late June, and, and chat with mayors from some larger cities, obviously, they're dealing with different things than we are, but also mayors of cities our size. The U.S. Conference of Mayors are mayors of cities 30,000 and greater. But the idea of security, everyone's talking about. And there are cities in our regional area here that border us, and that are right around us, that are having these exact same conversations. And it's, it has a component to security in this room, hardening this room for the people that are here, for, for not just the elected officials, obviously, our staff, the people that attend. There's also, you know, looking, because of the Virginia shooting, looking at, and I know we'd have in years past, looking at our reception desk, looking at our windows that people come in and when they visit. I don't know what the answers are, and I'm not suggesting anything here. I'd love to maybe have some comment from all of you. My suggestion, that I'd like to ask my colleagues, is just to have staff come back with some possibilities. What are other cities doing? What have they done? What are some generic ballpark costs, you know, that we can't do everything? Should we do something? Should we be doing a little bit more? I know that we're one of the few, that I know of, council dais chambers like this that are not hardened, yet most have done something. So, I just think we ought to address it. I know school district with their new bond referendum passing, that's, that was a key component of that, and they're going to harden every single one of their schools and their buildings. So, I think we would be remiss if we did not address it. So, is that acceptable for all of you to have staff just, there's no time, time limit on this, it's just soon, I guess, but talk to us, and I know we did budget tonight, I don't know if that was something that potentially could be thrown in as well, but, any thoughts from any of you?
I think it's a good idea. I think we need to, we need to look at it. I mean, it's important to keep our staff safe.
Yeah.
And our residents, as well.
And, and it's not just about the individual sitting here, but it's about the position. And, I mean, our society as a democracy, in essence, fails if judges, police officers, and elected officials are not protected, because they are the ones that govern the rule of law. And if that ever begins to fail, then chaos erupts. So, I mean, we have to be looking at all those areas, and we just had the Chief Judge of Hennepin County in, and she referenced that. So, I mean, it clearly is sadly a concern across our nation, and I think this, this city and this council needs to take a, take a look at that. All right. Thank you. Next item is the report of city manager and abandoned homes report. Mr. Gettle.
Yes, Mayor. So, this is a follow-up to one of the council member items of a previous meeting. So, we're coming back with a report based on one of your previous items, and I'm pleased to have our building inspections manager, Kevin Schmieg, to update you on vacant homes, abandoned homes, an issue you brought up at the last meeting.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, I'm here to report on vacant and abandoned homes at your request. To start off with, I think that we should give what the definitions really are. There's a difference between abandoned and vacant homes. Abandoned typically are long-term vacancy, no longer maintained with no viable restoration. Typically, they're fire damaged, or they're properties slated for development. Vacant, vacancy varies both short and long term. There's many different reasons that buildings are vacant, single-family homes are, military deployments, job relocation, vacation properties, investments, pending sales, foreclosures, and pending estate settlements. There is not a state law or city ordinance that requires the registration of any properties on vacancy in the city of Eden Prairie. There's no repository or registration location where they're at. The only way we're made aware of vacant properties is through, one, is either a complaint, or two, in the event that a prospective buyer comes in and tells us that the property is vacant. That's the only ways we know. We're made aware of, once we're made aware of vacant properties, the building inspectors do do drive-bys, and we're looking for safety issues that there may be with the properties. We also, generally, vacancy is not indicative of, of an issue of the condition of the property. A lot of times, it is a perceptual issue, when neighborhoods have a vacant property into it. With the exception of abandoned properties, abandoned properties can have issues with them. That's where you start having windows being broken and vandals, and you have the, you run the risk of people coming into the house and potentially starting fires, and we have had some of those in our history here. But for the most part, it's a perceptual issue that, that neighborhoods have with those. I've found in most of my dealings, most of the problems that draw with properties are from the people that live there and their uses of the property. Vacant properties, the mayor asked for the top 10. I have eight. And these are the locations, I purposely didn't put the street addresses on them, Eden Prairie Road, Staring Lakes East, Green Ridge, Christie Lane, Pioneer Trail, Sunny Brook Road, Hennepin Town Road. Three of those properties are what I would term abandoned. Pioneer Trail, Sunny Brook Road, Hennepin Town Road. There may be others out there that we know, where there is no maintenance or, or a viable reuse from them. Some of these other homes that are here, and other properties that we have, they're very well-maintained. Several of them have outstanding orders that we have on the property. Several of them have been sold and are now under permit. Christie Lane, infamous one of that. One of them has been renovated and now is for sale. And the abandoned ones that are here are held for, those three are held by people looking at for a future development, they're developers. Complaints. The city only pursues possible maintenance violations on a complaint-only basis. That's the way that we're staffed. We are staffed to do, deal with complaints, when upon receipt of a complaint, we go out and follow it up. The only proactive enforcement that we do in any area in the city is with fire inspections of existing occupancies. All other occupancy, every other time we do an inspection, it's either because of a permit or a license. The only anomaly to that is for fire inspections. None of the other are done on a proactive approach, meaning we solicit that, that work. In the event, though, that we go out and we see a property that's in distress, inspectors do do drive-bys. We inspect it for safety issues. We also look if there's fences are falling down, or there's garage doors are open, they're open to trespass. We will look at that, even without a complaint, if we see those types of things. But we only pursue them on a complaint-only basis, and that's the way that we're staffed. When we receive a complaint, typically within 24 hours, we send out, if it comes to inspections, or it comes to zoning, or it comes to our parks people, typically within 24 hours, we send out our first inspector. The inspector first goes out there and looks to see if any violations exist. It's not uncommon to have neighborhood disputes, issues with people. Sometimes there's spousal issues that there are, and they make complaints against other properties. So, it's very important that we go out there and first verify that there is in fact a violation. We also go out there, when we look at it, to see if there's violations that would affect other areas of the city, other departments, zoning, be it, or be it tall weeds, so that we can all collectively go out and verify that, so we get all of the different violations that there would be with the properties. Handling of complaints. There's three primary divisions that work on property maintenance issues. High grass and weeds go into the park department for a weed, the weed inspector, exterior building conditions, and inadequate maintenance are referred to building inspections. Vehicle debris, junk, garbage, and other zoning violations are referred to the zoning inspector, and in the police department. We also utilize the expertise of other divisions within the city. We will use the engineering department if there's a retaining wall issue, poor graining. We will also use the fire department if there's accumulation of combustible materials, or if we indicate that there may be interior issues with the property, if it could be a potential garbage house, we also use our planning department.
If, if there was a reason that you felt, we were talking at dinner tonight, that you can't just even hardly look in a window, but if there was a reason you felt it was abandoned, people had not lived in there for years, that it was dangerous inside something, would that be a court order for you to be able to have to get in order to go into that house?
We'd, we'd have to get, I can defer to the city attorney, but we'd need an inspections warrant, and we do get those on occasion. We've done them on garbage houses and hoarding houses, we've gotten it, but we have to have a justification. Typically, we have to have somebody who's actually seen the issue. Otherwise, we deal with the same plain view doctrine that the police deal with. We can't go up and sneak into people's windows and, and look in there. We can't go up and sneak into people's windows and look in there. So we have to have basically, most of the time, it's from a complaint, or if we can get it going up to the front door, if we can see that. A lot of times on hoarding issues and garbage houses, when they open the door, if we can detect the smell or the odor, we can see in, that's how we initially get in there.
Councilmember Nelson, sorry, I thought I had a break in there. You finish, then I'll get to that.
But would just be then we would need an inspection warrant to get in.
Sure.
I assume you're not returning, referring to say, someone who has their home for sale, the grass is mowed, the flowers are maintained, but they may have moved already, especially if they might have moved to another city or something, but the house has been on the market for six months and the realtor is taking care of it. I assume that's not what you're talking about.
No, I think that that's, but there is so many different types of vacancies that there are. You know, a lot of homes on different periods of times are vacant.
There's a lot of snowbirds, too, where you find somebody taking off in November and coming back in early April. And, you know, sometimes they live in a common community where there's snow shoveling, or sometimes they're just hired to have it done themselves. But in truth, half of the year, every year, they're not there, but they're not abandoned either.
No. And I think that for the most part, the vast majority, we have a vacancy, as you indicated, was seasonally. Most of the properties are still maintained. They have services that come in. We have the outliers that cause the problems. I mean, we've got a lot of properties that there are here. And as you'll see just in a second, I mean, we have, the numbers may look somewhat large, maybe they look small to you, but I want to give you some of the data on what the complaints really are. These are zoning violations, and you can look out over the trends. In 2018, there was, there's a variety of different zoning violations. They're not all related to properties. They're for other issues. It could be for parking and other things. But there was 173 that they did in zoning last, in 2018. They only issued 19 citations. Percent compliance was 89%. And you see it runs around 90% with the tools that we currently utilize for that. And those could be for a variety of things, but a lot of those could be for junk or collection of debris or unlicensed vehicles that are in the yard, things that cause concern for neighbors. Tall grease, grass, and weed violations. You can see the trend is all over. It depends, I think, on what the growing season was. I would think it'd probably be higher this year. But in 2018, there was 62 number of violation letters sent. There was number of property mowed only 14, which is 77%. Number of repeat offenders was seven. Those are people who don't get it, and the city cuts their grass for them. Exterior maintenance. Currently, the inspections division has outstanding orders on 14 properties. They vary from, everything from painting, siding that isn't completed, decks that have issues. Those are the bulk of them. Sometimes there's broken windows. There's a home that where the windows were shot out with a BB gun, and they replaced them, and within a few months, they were shot out again. And that's some of the stigma that it is, and typically, those are kids that do that. But it's out of concern because it's a vacant property, and there's this perception that it's dangerous. But they are not always. I think this is kind of important. I want to go through this, the types of people who violate and have issues. There's people that are aware of the issues but do not have the financial wherewithal to make the required repairs. That happens very frequently. There's people that can be embarrassed of it, and we go out to write these orders. We have to weigh that out, what kind of a violator that we have. We have to get a sense for, because there's different approaches. I show you what the tools are after this. But that's a big one, and we have some good tools for that. It's hard to believe, but there's a lot of people that don't realize that a problem exists. They just don't see it with their eyes. They see it as normal. It's maybe from where they grew up, the way their family was, the last place that they live, and they carry that with them, and they honestly do not see an issue with it. And this is a very common one, the procrastinators, the people who are always going to get at it, and they just don't. And then we have, do have these, and these are the ones that the citations are written to, is people that do not care and are unwilling to comply with an order. They just don't care. They don't want the city intruding into their business. And lastly is developers. And the reason is, is they're always looking for, we've always been very developer-friendly. These people buy these properties with an expectation that they're going to turn them over very quickly. That doesn't always happen. They can run into issues that there are with the development. They had this grand plan, and for other reasons, they can't make it go. So they hold these properties. Enforcement tools. Like in that first scenario where we have people who don't have the financial wherewithal, and we sense that, we write the orders and make the owner aware of the city's rehab program. We actually include that, give that to them. That is a fantastic program. It's helped out many people in the city when they have distress, because these people, you have to understand, are, they don't want to live like this, you know? And we want to get these homes fixed, because it can cause astigmatism for their kids and other things. We want to get them fixed, and this is a tool that we use, and we make good use of it for that, for these types of things. Because you have to understand is that, you know, if we go out, it's very simple for I or my staff to write an order on that, replace your siding, but that's a $25,000 bill. You know, there's not a lot of people that can come up with that in 36, 90 days. That's why this rehab program is very important. And that's also why sometimes when we, enforcement, it lags, it seems to take longer, and it's because of the different tools that we have in place. This is a more common one, is we write an order and explain what the problem is and the importance of rectifying the issue. I mean, you go out and you let it actually counsel and mentor them a little bit, and you see anything different with your property? Do all the other ones have their trash in their front yard? Do they have junk cars? You're an anomaly in your neighborhood, and you have to kind of coach them along with that. The next way is following an order. This works very well. We threaten with a citation. We just say, these are the procrastinators. A lot of the procrastinators jump on it right away, because a spouse or another family member said, you've been promising to do it, and they jump on it immediately. But the ones when we, they keep putting it off, they're procrastinators, we threaten them with a citation, and they will jump and get on it. The other ones that just don't want to comply, we issue a citation. And lastly, in very extreme circumstances where there's a threat to the community's safety, we can issue an order through chapter 463, and it orders the abatement of hazards. That's where we come before you and get an order to have it rectified, and that's up to and including raising of the building. That's a very, very high standard. And giving an example is that a house that was open for trespass, and we have it secured, and that house is secured regardless of aesthetically, as long as it doesn't provide a danger to the adjoining community, it would be very difficult to get an order for 463 to do that. Now, if that, we have in the past, we have utilized it where houses have continued to be broken into, where we have used it. It's more common also with, we've used 463 on fire damaged properties where they're in negotiations with the insurance company or potentially arson, where they aren't getting the funds for it. We've used 463 on it. The other house that, if you remember, on Ontario, I think some of you had seen that, that house has been scraped, they settled with the insurance company. We had not received any complaints on that from the neighborhood, other than a person who drove by it. That's why we let him extend it, but he was going through litigation on that, and the neighbors were pretty comfortable with that. But that was really the process, and those are the tools that we have in place and the different type of violation. And we use these different tools in different circumstances, considering what the violators Entertain any questions.
Council, councilmember Freiber.
Thank you for your presentation. There's three properties that you mentioned are abandoned, and I want to talk about one that, the one that you have on Pioneer, for instance. I know that that's saying that it's up for development. As a property like that, are all those taxes paid on these abandoned properties, as far as we can tell?
Yes.
I guess the level of concern that I have is, one of the things that I've always taken pretty serious as a member of the council, is that we have a responsibility jointly to preserve the value of our homes, as our biggest investments that our residents have. And we're not talking vacant properties yet, we're talking abandoned when I'm saying this. And I'm looking at that property, I went by today, I go by it every day, I just went by it today. I can't see how that is not hazardous to kids. I'm just thinking, I'm just looking at it, and it looks like an abandoned property like that could be prone to arson, you know, it could very easy be broken into. And there's a distinct difference between that, to me, and vacant properties, but I totally understand most of these vacant ones. But I don't look at that as being an extreme. I would imagine the other two on that abandoned list are probably very similar. And it seems like if we have ordinances, that we should never be afraid to enforce an ordinance if it makes sense. I mean, I understand counseling, I understand reasoning, the whole thing, but there's a point in time that, come on, because what's to say 10 years from now? That property's not in that condition, sitting right there, and we're still saying the same thing? The only thing that's going to change is that property's going to continue to deteriorate, and it's going to just make it worse. A concern I have. Thank you for the report, excellent report.
No, thanks. So I was the one that raised this along with the support of the rest of you, Em. And I appreciate that we have this process, and I know that I've heard it before in the last 20-some years, so it's a great refresher, and you did a great job. And we do have a process in place. So I didn't raise it, and just for the comfort level of anyone listening or living in our city today, I didn't raise the concern because of the person that sells their house and goes out of town, you know, for three months, or even the house that hasn't, needs to be painted, but, you know, is waiting until next year, or the house that has the fence that needs to be painted. I don't know who that would be, but I didn't raise it for that. I really raised it for the three abandoned houses that, I mean, I may be wrong on my years here, but I know the one up on Christie Lane is five, six, seven years, I think, because I know in a couple campaigns back, I was up there, so it's been a while. The one across from CMS, I don't know. I mean, I'd put a decade on it, I'm not sure. The Pioneer Trail one, granted, it's been in this process of development, but I guess I would second what councilmember Freiber is saying, that at some point, we need stronger something to move on these houses. And even if they are, you know, we take them down and leans against that property, I don't know what the law would allow and all that, but I know one of them is a bank out in New York or something, and we've been trying to be in contact, I think that's Christie Lane.
Well, so Kevin, there is an update on the Christie Lane one. Kevin can explain that.
And that's good, but it is frustrating, sitting here and having the residents that we represent, like, year after year after year of going to these national night outs and hearing the same, and I just go, I know, you know, and you go back to staff, and it's like, well, it's in process, and that's not okay. So I don't know what that means yet exactly, and I know that we probably have right now the processes to go through and do that, but I guess what we're all saying maybe is encouraging staff, if it means moving faster, if it means coming back to us for some, you know, motion or legal something. Now, I would caution all of you sitting up here, there may be some money attached to that. I mean, if we actually go after legally, we may need to spend some dollars. I don't know. But I think that's what our responsibilities are, is to keep our housing stock as up as possible, so. Anyway, I wanted to underscore what you said.
Actually, there almost should be a rule that your home cannot be boarded up for longer than so long. You know, maybe a year or whatever it takes to typically get, but it either has to have real live windows and your grass cut and everything, or it has to be taken down, so it's just vacant land. But it needs to be a reasonable amount of time, but when it goes year after year, just because they're waiting, and like the one, the pictures with all the windows, that's just not fair to the rest of that neighborhood. Maybe it's great for the person who's holding the property, but they could hold it just as land.
One of our conferences we went to, there's a product, and it's available, I'm sure it's more, a lot more expensive than plywood, but it's a heavy plexiglass product. And so I guess we're looking to you, Kevin, and other staff for advice, but do we need strengthening our ordinance? Can we pass an ordinance that says you can't use plywood? You have to use this plexiglass product if you ever need to board up a window. I just think we need to look at our ordinance and really look at how we can strengthen it so that we don't get a house that, I hope I'm not wrong, but I really believe it's five, six, seven, eight years sitting abandoned. I just, again, I just don't understand that. Did you, Mr. Russell, you're looking at me like you might want to say something?
I could respond to some of this. The last suggestions that you have made, we do have an exterior building code, so we could look at that and incorporate some of those matters into the code if the council The concept, though, of telling a property owner, make it not vacant or take it down, is not something that we have the power to do, absent a finding under state law that it's a hazardous building or property, which means because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, physical damage, unsanitary conditions, or abandonment constitute a fire hazard or a hazard to public safety and health. So we've gone through that process, I think in fact with the Christie Lane property.
Christie Lane had mold, right?
And, you know, the basement filled, I mean, hundreds of thousands of gallons of water, mold, dilapidated, it met the definition. And so a lot of work then was done to remove those hazardous types of conditions. And so I haven't looked at the house in a while, but I imagine it's just that those conditions have not reappeared, but the house is still sitting there vacant, and that is of concern, of course, to residents, but it doesn't constitute, under state law, a hazardous building. Because if it's not dilapidated, if it doesn't have inadequate maintenance or unsanitary conditions, all of which were present previously, that's what gave us the authority to do that. So, but I do appreciate the comments about looking at the exterior maintenance code and seeing what we could do with respect to adopting some provisions from other communities. Mr. Schmieg has always preached the broken window theory, and this certainly fits into that whole concept, that you get ahead of the curve and you make sure that properties are well-maintained, which always doesn't set well with some residents because of cost factors, et cetera, but it does affect your entire community. So we can certainly take a look at that.
Well, and Christie Lane's a really good classic example here on both sides of it. So I agree with you that they've, the bank, I believe it's the bank owner, now has a lawn mowing service, so the lawn, I believe, is mowed. There are windows now, they're replaced. I know we're not permitted to go looking in windows, but staying at the front door, I could see through the window, and I believe the rooms are down to studs, so it's just sitting there, ready for somebody someday to redo the whole thing. And even though I, as a councilmember, would want for our residents that that house not sit there for the next, I'm making this up, 25 years with just studs, right, and nobody living in it, I hear you that the law may not permit us there. But what I'm questioning, though, in the two other instances of the houses I know of that I would call abandoned, there's something wrong with them inside. And that's where I'm wondering, I just believe that deeply, one of them particularly. So that's where I'm wondering, I think that's a health hazard. So how do we, how do we get the law to allow, you know, us to find that out?
So we need a conversation about what is it that causes you or anyone else to believe that those conditions exist? Gather as much evidence about that as we can, and petition, and convince a judge that the judge should grant us a search warrant to go in and make that determination, which is what Mr. Schmieg has talked about doing in some cases, and we have been successful with that. But it's been on the basis of gathering this evidence. Knocking on the door, seeing, you know, talking to the person, that's legal, you can see what you can see. In some cases, it is bad enough just from talking at the front door, that we have enough evidence to go in. Sometimes neighbors have been inside, and they can provide affidavits to us. Sometimes social service agencies are involved, and those people have been inside, and they can provide information to us.
I think what we're all saying, and what I think, I appreciate the fact that you say there is no list. I mean, I understand that. But because of complaints, we do have a trend, we have history, we have a list in that sense. And I think what we're all saying is, when it gets to the point that those two or three or four houses are on that list, and they are damaging neighborhoods in terms of home values, then we as a city need to move. And I believe we are. I'm not saying in any way that anyone's shirking their jobs, or, not at all. And maybe it's just that this conversation's good for staff to hear again, that council really wants to, you know, empower you and with the hand of the law to do whatever we can to protect our residents.
The other advantage of the 463 process, even though it's a stringent standard, it allows us to assess our costs back against the property.
Perfect. All right, councilors, oh?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I'd just like to report on that Christie Lane house. That property has been sold, and...
That property has been sold, and they're in the process of rehabbing it right now. They have a building permit, so the bank, New York Bank of Million, has sold it to a private party, and they have got permits, and I was out there about a week ago, and they're redoing all the plumbing into it, so they hope to have that up, and we'll have a family in there.
Fantastic, thank you.
Down to two. All right, thank you for your report, thank you for your time, all you do, I mean, I brag about you all the time, Mr. Schmieg, you're the best of the best, so I'm not in any way thinking otherwise, I just, you know, it's just that befuddlement, right? Because how possibly can these houses sit like that, and what else can we be doing, and how can we empower all of you to continue to do that? So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Oak Point Elementary School site plan, early land alteration permit. Mr. Getchow, do you want to, or yes, go ahead, please.
Mayor and council members, the school district has submitted an application for a site plan approval, and also a variance, to add an 85-stall parking lot to Oak Point Elementary School, and that has already been through the planning commission, who has approved the variance, and unanimously recommended approval of the site plan, and a public hearing on the site plan approval will be held before the city council on August 13th. However, due to timing considerations and wanting to get the project done early in the school year, the school district has requested a land alteration permit in advance of the public hearing at their own risk, so that they could start work. And I believe they would like to do a brief presentation this evening to present the project to you. Again, the public hearing will be held August 13th.
Come on forward and state your name, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jay Palmeroy, I'm a landscape architect with Anderson Johnson Associates. Jason Mutzenberger, the business director for Eden Prairie Schools is behind me, so if there's any questions related to program or site, he's certainly there to answer questions. If you could pull up our, there you go. As mentioned, we were here last Monday night in front of the planning commission, they unanimously approved the variance to increase the hard surface coverage on the property. It's just over 23 acres. We're increasing the hard surface by about .55 acres, just over half an acre on the 23-acre site. And we are here tonight for, as mentioned, the land alteration permit, so we can get going on the project. The contractor is already on board, watershed permits are in hand, we went through Riley Purgatory over the last several months, working with staff, engineering, planning, et cetera. We're very close, so I appreciate again being here tonight. As mentioned, the site proper, Oak Point Elementary, which it's worth stating that it's actually Oak Point Elementary and Eagle Heights Spanish Immersion School, lot of students, 1,700 students on that site. Before I get into that, the property, as I mentioned, is just over 23 acres, there is an adjoining property just to the west of almost eight acres. They're not combined, had they been combined, we'd be over, well, we'd be under the threshold for the 30% impervious surface, and we wouldn't have had to have the variance, but because they're not joined, we were there last week. The site, again, with its 23 acres, the variance was for that half acre of improved parking lot, and so now our impervious surface is up to just over 38%. And the parking lot, as you can see on the diagram, is off to the southwest corner. It's 85 stalls that we're proposing to handle some of the internal pressures with parking and circulation. Right now, buses and services up on the north, or up on the, I'm sorry, east side of the upper, if you will, campus, parking, drop-off, service access is on the lower side. So, there's a lot happening on that lower side, so this proposed parking lot will provide some of that, I don't know, allow for traffic to be uncongested, if you will. I'll skip over that for now. The plans have all been submitted, I believe you all have copies of all the plans, just to go through briefly. Again, the parking lot is to the west of the main drive out, or in, actually, to. We looked at any number of different stormwater solutions between the city engineering staff, as well as Riley Purgatory. It was a long process in trying to determine the best and most efficient, economical, and environmentally sensitive way to go. We looked at stormwater reuse for irrigation, we looked at underground infiltration, what we came to is an above-ground, albeit fairly shallow, infiltration. We have, just to the south, we have a gas manisement, we have a water manisement, we have the wetland to the west, a lot of stuff happening in here. We've got playgrounds to the north. So, again, people will come in, staff is really designated for this parking lot, they'll be there before the parents are dropping their kids off, they'll leave after the kids have been picked up. So, that parking lot will be filled for most of the day, and that staff parking lot will remain fairly quiet during the course of the day. As mentioned in the staff report, we've got plantings to satisfy city code, I didn't include it, it's not a great illustration, but we've also included LED lighting to light the parking lot and the spectator, pedestrian access trails. And again, we're here to discuss for the land alteration permit, so we can get going on it early. If you have any questions for myself or Jason, we're here.
I do have one question. I hardly agree you need more parking at Oak Point. In fact, you've needed it for close to 20 years. It used to be impossible to come in as a parent who needed to go in and visit a teacher, or, you know, was volunteering for two hours for the Halloween party, or whatever it was, to find any place to park. Is there going to still be enough playground space?
Playgrounds, yes, we're actually, again, things are funny how they change over the years, the Gaga Pit, we improved the playground last year to allow for access, or expanded playground area for that. The playground is improved a couple of years ago as well. The multipurpose, the grass area, will still be designated to the north of the basin, again, the basin's only a couple of feet deep, and it won't have water in it for, unless there's a gully washer, unfortunately, as we seem to have every week. So, again, there's grass space still designated. The programmed T-ball or infield, the ag lime infield, fields are going to go away with this, seems to be more programmatically inclined toward multipurpose soccer, T-ball can be played right on grass, pickup games, kickball, that type of thing.
So, there's still room for large motor play of various kinds?
Yes, yep.
No, I think it's, like I say, it's probably been needed for more than 20 years, so.
Councilmember Aho.
I was just going to ask basically the same question, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's clear that we need more parking at the school. The question is just, is there enough room for kids to play, given, you know, that we lose the parking lot area, plus the infiltration basin is not usable at some time of the year, if it's wet, so, but you've already discussed that, so I think it sounds reasonable.
Councilmember Norrion.
You know, I like the idea that you have LED lighting, but I do have a question, though. The future is related to electric cars, is there any plan to have charging stations for cars, especially for staff?
Yeah, not on this and not at this point.
So, if you do not have, is it possible to add in the future?
Oh, yeah.
Is it, is it, does it cost more, a lot more money to do that as?
No, not necessarily, with, there's actually any number of school districts that we're working with where we're planning for the charging stations, but not putting them in now. Not to be reactive, but certainly to have that in mind, but no, it doesn't, it won't cost any more in the future. Most of the conduit that you'd put in, even if we were doing it now, would go around the parking lot, not under it, just from a maintenance standpoint, so, no, that's still...
So, you do not need to do any provisioning for future charging station, which helps the cost at that time?
Not at this point, no.
At this point, thank you.
Yep.
Your lights still on, are you good?
Oh, yeah.
That's good, I could have turned it off. So, I'm toying in my head here with the proper role that a city council would play in interfacing with the school district. It's clearly your staff and your decision-making on what the educational needs are of students, but we're obviously being asked to weigh in, representing the same constituents, in most cases that the school, district school board does. And because we have this part to play, I'm going to venture carefully into an area that seemingly maybe is the school district. So, caveat for anyone out there, and all of you, and you know this, that I worked at Oak Point for 21 years. So, for the years that I was there as an intermediate school, granted five, six, so there are expectations, we learned that there are Minnesota state guideline policies, but they're guidelines, they're not, they're recommendations, for square footage of playground per student. We were grossly under through the entire 21 years I was there. Now, granted, an elementary group of children might technically, in fact, I know that per child square footage is less, but you are taking out, well, if that basin's wet, you're taking out, you know, 50% of that open space playground, and it's not like you go to the other side of the school, you've got the roads there, and you, I mean, there's places you could kind of take one class out at a time with good supervision. So, there's two elementary schools in that building, and I just, I don't, let me ask, has this been vetted in terms of the PTOs, the parents, are, you know, the school board really deeply been involved with, in terms of parent groups? Because I, I'm somewhat surprised, and taking back a little bit, that this much playground, square footage is being removed.
Mayor Kay, city council, city staff, thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Jason Mutzenberger, executive director of business services for the school district. To answer your question, Mayor, we have talked with certainly school board, first and foremost, to see what their appetite is, what questions they have. We have also talked with staff at Oak Point and Eagle Heights, and we've talked with the PTOs as well. The overwhelming response is, we need more parking.
Right.
And what can we do to address that? We know from a day-to-day parking standpoint, parking is okay. We can manage the number of cars that we have that park there all day long. It's really more traffic flow, it's event night, whether it's an open house, or other large events that we have, that's where we really struggle with parking. We know that during traffic flow times, whether, you know, the start of school for drop-off, or pickup at the end of the day, for weather days, that's where we really struggle with traffic flow, on Starring Lakes, and even Anderson Lakes Parkway gets backed up on. So, what we're hoping to address here is not just parking during the day, but those special events and traffic flow. We've certainly talked about it from a recreation standpoint, what the space, the play area for kids. We know that the further away we get from the building, the less space that we use, because it's just from a time constraint issue, kids have too far to get to that south playground or south field to play, and then get back to class in that short recess period. So, we're trying to do the best of both worlds here, add some parking, keep some multipurpose play space for kids.
Sure. No, I 110% support, as councilmember Nelson said, that the parking's been problematic since the first day I was there in 1990. I know at one time, I don't know if it was, it'd be interesting to go back to the original developers' agreement, but it felt like there was some proof of parking options to go, you know, so as soon as you pull in the driveway and you go immediately to the right and you're circling around, there's a hillside there. And in fact, I just drove it today right before I came here, and so there is room to punch parking, in fact, there's 60, room for 60 stalls, I think, up the right side. It's problematic with the flow of traffic, but again, if it was teachers parking and they're parked, that was always going to be the possibility, that I had heard principals talk to us, that if we ever needed additional parking. So, I'm sure you looked at that, and I guess with the traffic flow, that I can understand completely why that would not be as viable an option. Well, I'm going to leave that decision totally into the hands of school staff and school board in terms of program, programmatically, but I will say, as a teacher, I guess I can't leave this conversation, and especially if residents chatted with me and asked if I said nothing. The times I taught mostly, well, sixth grade completely there, but I taught fifth grade the 10 years before that, and there wasn't a day that my students weren't out at a ball field. So, you've taken the two ball fields out of there, and you're keeping the fifth grade there. Sixth grade will be going to CMS, I understand that, but I'll admit, I'm older and times have changed, but I at least wanted to park that concern at this point. You all have studied that, and I'm going to defer to your educational expertise. I deeply in my heart question it, but I do think there are multiple opinions on this, multiple ways to see it, so. Thank you for clarifying, coming. Mr. Getchow.
Yeah, I just, I want to mention, because it's not in the annotated, but it's in the packet, that the request is, that your vote is to authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit.
Right. Just that it's coming back to us for, once you start moving ground.
Yeah.
You don't have ball fields anymore, so, yeah.
Yeah, no, agreed, I'm just, as Janet said earlier, it's a, it's a public hearing in August.
Absolutely. Yes. Did staff, both on city side and school district side, look at the idea of, and I suppose of the playground's more dangerous to have a deep pond? So, I'm assuming that's why you did not, but it would take up, you know, one-fifth of the area of land, and I suppose you could fence it, but did we look at a Nert pond that was deep and that didn't have to take up all this land?
Yes, because we need to infiltrate an inch of water, there's an infiltration requirement, both at city level and at the water, more so at the water level, or county watershed jeepers, as well as state. So, Nert ponds are not an option anymore, really, unless we have a bench around it for that infiltration purpose.
Okay.
So, on something this size, again, we looked at any number of things, but yeah, that was not an option.
All right. So, I'm looking for my...
So, do we need a motion, then?
So, we do, correct? And this is not a public hearing?
Correct.
So, looks like there is no, I'm getting there, oh, there is no place.
It's not in the, that's why I mentioned that, yeah, it's not in the annotated, but it's in the packet on page 241.
Okay. Do you want to read it to us, and then someone can so move?
I can read it to you, it's to authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit for Oak Point Elementary School at the request of the developer.
I would make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there any further discussion, and again, this will come back to us in August? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose? Great, thanks for coming. All right. I believe Mr. Lothammer again, unless we want to go through Mr. Getchow?
Yes, no, Mayor, you're right, Mr. Lothammer has a brief report. I'm asking and I'm telling.
Here begins my brief report, Your Honor and council members. I want to introduce you tonight to the concept of a columbarium, and certainly if there are terms that are used, some of them are terms that I have learned over the last six months and looking further into this, so certainly stop me and ask questions at any time, these aren't everyday terms. But to start out with, I just want to orientate you, because most people don't know that there's a city cemetery, I understand that and hear that a lot. And also, thank you. Also, many people assume that the cemetery that's called Eden Prairie Cemetery is owned by the city, but that's not. So, the one we're talking about that is owned and operated by the city of Eden Prairie is called Pleasant Hills Cemetery on Pioneer Trail, adjacent, very close to Pox Christie Church. And so, this is the outline of that cemetery, the bottom, you see where it's County Road One, Pioneer Trail, and the outline shows the boundaries of the cemetery, and the one I want to just point to, to orientate you on, is this corner down here is right now the empty portion of the cemetery. And so, that's as we zoom into some of the other drawings, that's the area that I'm going to be talking about when it comes to the concept of a columbarium. So, if you look at our overall cemetery, it's divided into two sections, those two sections have a little bit different rules in terms of above-ground headstones, flush headstones, but we do have in the first section, 756 grave sites, and they are all sold or have burials. Now, if you buy a grave site in our cemetery, you can have a casket burial, or you can have a casket burial and a cremation. So, in some of the grave sites, there can actually be two internments, one in a casket and one as a cremation. On section two, we have 61 grave sites, and all those are either sold or buried, or already have burial. So, people buy them anticipating that someday they will use them, and so we don't know when that will be, but a lot of those... those are sold. The people own actual deeds to that piece of property. We sell them that deed. Section three, 530 grave sites. If we do go with a columbarium, we would take a few of those. So right now, there's 138 plots that are left in the cemetery, as is. 64 of those would be taken by a columbarium. And that columbarium, it's 96, and I'll show you a couple pictures of how this works out, but it's 96 potential within the columbarium of people that have been cremated, and then also a potential for 245 people within the osserarium. So I think it's easier if I show you a photo. We've been working with an architect on some concept drawings of what would fit. You can see, these are almost like a locker-sized spaces to them. On one of them, you can see the granite has had inscription put into it already. So that's one of the lockers in the columbarium. And that can hold two different internments within that spot. And it certainly comes off and gets refaced. So at the time of somebody's death and being put into that part of the columbarium, you literally just, we send it away and we have it inscribed, and that face plate comes back and gets put on. The osserarium that I talk about, so there's a potential for 96 in these actual lockers. But think about how that's designed, and in the middle, there's empty space. So another common way for a cremation to happen is then to go into the middle of that columbarium, which is known as a ossuary. And so people, instead of buying a urn, they buy a satin bag, and that's what the ashes come back in. And there's one door, and usually what happens is, one of those levels going around, it's a smaller inscription that goes around. But in the middle, altogether, you could have 245 burials of people in there in their own separate holding containers, lockers. You could have 96 companions. So you could times that by two if every one were to have two in. Now, not every one is going to have two, some might just have one. And so what we looked at is, thinking about, how do we look at the future? Eventually, we run out of land. And the other key is, in 2017, for the state of Minnesota, that was the first time that more people were cremated versus buried in a casket. And so there is a trend in what people are looking for and looking to do, and also show you there's going to be a cost difference, too, for people, for our residents, if they do to select a cremation-type of burial. So this is a concept of, when you come in off our main gates, you come in off the main gates, you would take a pathway down. The osserarium would be in this location with some pavers in between it. Some of this is plantings. There's also stairways going down. There's benches so people can sit and contemplate and be kind of in a more tranquil place. But the other piece that we looked at, too, is, what about the future, and how many years from now might we want to make an addition to it? And so I'm going to show you also what it looks like if we added more than one of these down the road. These are some of the landscape architects' concepts of what the type of plantings would be, what the benches might look like, the pavers going down to it. Certainly, the columbarium is granite, same material as what many of the headstones are, and then able to be inscribed in. This is what it would look like if you, at some point in time, ran out of room in the main cemetery and ran out of room in the first columbarium. There's room to add two more in there and make it more of a, kind of a plaza feel in between them. And then, a couple of cost comparisons that I just want to point out, and certainly, this isn't what it fully costs, but these are some of the costs that we, the city, charge back to people that are being buried. Currently, a ground burial, you pay $650 for a plot. Generally, an above-ground is less than that. So when we would come back to you in the future, if we do this concept, we would have more specific pricing, but generally, it's about 70% of what a ground burial plot purchase would be, because you're purchasing a smaller space or a locker kind of site. The grave site dig, you don't have any costs. If you do a ground burial, you have to pay for somebody to do that. Headstone, that's about $1,000. It could be quite a bit more. That's the choice of the person. But in this case, you don't have the headstone. The cost to have this engraved is about $300, and that's considering. You might send it back more than once, once you have a second cremation. Just that casket, again, there's a huge range on caskets, but if you look up, about 300 or 3,000 as average, that urn is about 200. So you're really looking at some of that base cost of between 50, 300, and above to do a ground burial, and $1,000 if you do a above-ground, more cremation-style burial. So this is an opportunity for some of our residents that have some cost concerns or cost challenges to select a different, more cost-effective way, but also a way that recognizes the way that they may want to be interned upon their death.
Mr. Luthammer, a couple of council members, I think Councilmember Aho, and maybe Nelson, I'm not sure. Nope?
Just in looking at the costs that you have listed there on the slide, could you go back to that slide one second, please? Okay. So for above-ground, you have 500 for the plot or the niche. So does that cover the cost, is that intended to cover the cost of the columbarium, the construction and everything like that?
Yeah. So a couple things to think about that. The funding source to be able to build this columbarium would come out of our cemetery fund. We have two funds. When people have been paying us the $650 to own that ground, 80% goes into a fund for perpetual maintenance. 20% of that goes into future improvements or repairs. So about eight years ago, we had an old kind of chain-linked fence up there on part of the site. We took that down. It was in really bad shape. We put up a really nice, more wrought iron-looking fence. That's what that fund is meant for, that the 20% has gone to. So that's where this funding would come out of. And then, so if you also then start to do the math, if this was a private cemetery, and you were in this for the money, you would also then look at that $500 to buy the niche. There's 96 of those. And then if it was about, if you had the osserarium part of that, that'd probably be in that 300. Well, you can get 246 into that 300. So that goes to back pay, not just back pay the cost of the improvement, but also to take on future improvements. I think the good thing on this is, most of what we do with the portion of the dollars or the funds that's meant for perpetual care is lawn mowing. So in this case, with the granite, it's a little more of the shrubs and the trees and those kinds of things. But it does eventually pay itself back, but it's been paid forward in order to be able to make some of those improvements going forward, too.
Right. One last question. Have we had any requests from residents or others that are looking for a columbarium?
We have. Generally, they see us as a grave burial, but we do have people asking us when they come in looking for, you know, can I do a ground burial? If I am cremated, can it go in the ground? Could I do the above-ground scenario?
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Freyberg.
This question might have actually been answered a little bit by that one right there. Why now? I'm just curious what's prompted right now. Has it been an over-demand as far as the questions to you about columbarium? Or is it just looking, basically being proactive for the future?
Yeah, I think it's a little of both, but more so the proactive, looking at the future and looking at how things have changed in the way that people are being buried or are wanting to be buried going forward. It also, for us, helps us for extending the time and the space that we would have for the ground burials, too. It's a way of upping our capacity through density in one sense.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I like the idea. I also like the fact that you can have two more. The costs are, well, the costs of the cemetery are quite good compared to some other twin-city cemeteries. But if there's going to be 30% seniors in 10 years, seniors generally are at a closer age where they're thinking about burials than a younger person. And it does provide both a nice, but affordable option for those people. And I think it's a good thing to plan for, certainly that is the way things are going at this point. And to get something planned and then finally built where people can start utilizing and it can expand when you need to, that's a good idea.
So just to summary, this also helps for some of our parking circulation. We do have a pretty tight parking site, and we would add more of a one-way-in, one-way-out, that above-the-ground option that people are starting to look at more than they have in the past, the added capacity. And again, also that affordability and choice, that in some ways, when you die, you almost don't have, your family doesn't have much of a choice if your only choice is that ground burial, and it's fairly expensive at that point. There's some things that go into it. And there are many costs that I didn't show you that aren't related to what city cemeteries do, that go with, whether it's the ceremony in the church and the embalming and all of those kinds of things. So the numbers that I showed you are pretty low compared to what it really takes. So to give that affordability, I think, is important. And I think our next steps would be to go to a little more detailed design, so we could go out to contractors and get pricing back. So this wouldn't be the last time the council would see this. We would likely come back with some pricing and bid recommendations in the future.
Great. Is that it, Mr. Luthammer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And, you know, a lot of people may be, I don't know that cemeteries are on the top of their mind, but they may be interested in knowing how the city ever became owners of that cemetery. But it belonged to the Presbyterian Church of Eden Prairie, and as was typical back in the 1800s, many of those old churches had their little cemeteries next door. And then Presbyterian Church moved up to where Cub Food is up in there, before they now moved to their new location some 10 years back, more than that. But any time, state law says that when a cemetery becomes unfundable, or their escrow account sinks so low that it can no longer generate the funds to mow, then cities, the municipality that it's located in has to take it back over. I'm looking to Mr. Rosso to confirm. It has no choice. So it fell into our hands, and we now take care of it. We do have one other cemetery that, as of this point, has continued to remain private and keep its funds going, and I believe they're doing well. There may come a day, you know, decades after we're all gone, that it would also become a city cemetery. But that's how we got access to that cemetery. And by the way, just for our new council members, the private cemetery has a board that they elect. Our public cemetery, Pleasant Hills, also has a cemetery board, and you are looking at them. We are the official legislative cemetery board of the Pleasant Hills, city of Eden Prairie-owned cemetery. Congratulations on your new assignment. All right. I believe, is that all? Whoop, Mr. Rosso.
Yes. I've been told I should be shorter than the last two presentations.
So there.
I'll try. So, as you know, I've done some traveling, and I recently visited Stockholm, where my sister-in-law and her husband live. And they took us to visit the city hall. Now, I can tell you that it very, the first blush was, I spend enough time in city halls, I don't really need to visit one. But this was a wonderful city hall. They have 131 council members for a city of about 965,000 people.
Wow.
The city is situated on 14 islands in a lake that goes into the sea. It's renowned as the cleanest city in Europe. And while we were touring the city hall, that's the location where the Nobel Prizes, except for the Nobel Peace Prize, are handed out. The council chamber was quite impressive, and the room that impressed me the most was a room that was painted with gold leaf across the entire room that was as large as this room. So on the, on some of my many travels, I have passed out Eden Prairie Police and Fire Challenge Coins that I have purchased, and I've passed them out into bed, and in South America, in Bulgaria, and Alameda, California. And so while I was in Stockholm City Hall, I decided to purchase the Stockholm coin and bring it back as a gift to Eden Prairie. So I'd like to present that to the mayor.
Wow. We'll display this proudly. That's beautiful. Very nice. Thank you so much.
When are we going to get a coin?
Well, that's for the city.
This is not to me.
No.
I'm just saying, when are we going to get a coin?
A city coin.
Eden Prairie city coin.
We thought Brad Aho wanted a coin.
No, 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 no.
Challenge coin.
We have a, we have a very impressive police medal, don't we, that actually gets passed among police officers? And I believe that's what you're talking about, purchasing.
Both police and fire have.
Oh, fires on that, too. It's very beautiful. I guess, coin or medal or something, yes.
Yes, every officer across those countries that I've, police or fire that I've given it to, have been extremely impressed with the Eden Prairie coins.
Nice. All right. Is there anything else to come before the council this evening? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor and councilmember, it's my pleasure to move adjourned city council.
I think she beat you to it, but I'll let her second it. You were kind of slow in the take or the draw. All right, it's been made and seconded. This meeting is adjourned. Oh, wait, did I take a vote? All those?